It's my duty to inform you that we have an executive session at 6:30 this evening. This is my pleasure for you to do your roll call. Yes. Mrs. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Pousen?
Here.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Here.
Dr. Loughlin?
Here.
Dr. George?
Here.
Mr. Music?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Dr. Long?
Here.
Mrs. Mee?
Here.
Thank you, it's a pleasure. Typically, we do not have a hearing of visitors on the agenda for the committee to hold, but we are voting on one item this evening, and that item, if you have an agenda, is on page 2, and it's Resolution Number 215 under Item Number 8, property supply. And it's a change orders for the athletic wellness conference. So if anyone from the audience would like to come in to the board about anything about that one resolution, please stand and come to the podium and state your name and address. Okay, seeing that. So listeners, report, Mr. Naples.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Naples. Let the slayer report, Dr. Loughlin? No report. Student activities and recreation, Dr. Loughlin?
We're going to recognize tonight wrestling and ice hockey. But before that, I'll just note that the spring sports senior nights are most good as day.
Good evening to everyone. I'm more excited this evening. If you were at the recognition night, Mr. McCassell, Mr. Fairley, Mr. Schibbs, myself, have been talking that the winter sports season was the first time we can remember, and Chris McCassell and I, years of service out of it a lot, that all winter sports teams qualified for the postseason, all at the same time. So we're excited. And tonight, I guess, icing on the cake, the two sports that actually had state champions, and we're proud to recognize those individuals this evening. I guess we'll start first with wrestling, because there's less. Of course, wrestling here, here in my heart, being a former wrestler, I would be remiss if I said this was his first state title, because he won a whole bunch in junior Olympics. So being a state champ was nothing new, but he got it on the beach stage, as they say, this time. It's my privilege and honor at this time to introduce to you the trip's second state wrestling champion, Luke Kleber. How many did you win junior? So he's actually a six-time state champion. And at this time, we're going to have Superintendent Mrs. Swager and our President of the School Board, Mrs. Maynes, present.
Congratulations. Great team. So proud of you. Congratulations, and you're only a freshman. Everybody note that, freshman. They're expecting how many more state champions?
No pressure at all. And now, we've won our, it's almost becoming routine enough, we almost take it for granted to some extent, but being a hockey fan, also, we've won our fourth hockey state title over the last six years. And this year was quite the ride to do it. And we're very proud of our hockey team. And at this time, I'm going to ask Coach Slingly if he would like to come up and say a few remarks on the season and how it unfolded.
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. Wasn't quite prepared. John Weinberger, our head coach, was unable to attend the event and asked me not too long ago to kind of throw something together and adjust it tonight. I'd like to thank you again for having us here, particularly the school, Ms. Mirs, and Joe Cassell, and all of you. Without your support, all the time for all these programs and these students, student athletes, we would not be where we're at, the success we've had. So I'd like to thank all of you for your continued support. Prior to the season, we set some goals for ourselves as a team. We were able to achieve three of our four goals. You guys need to do all right. All right? We were section four champions, second seed for the postseason playoffs. That was one we missed. We were shooting for number one seed in postseason. We missed it by final game of the season. Right, final game of the season. But you know what? A game or two prior to that, I saw all these young men come together as a team. A game or two prior to that final game that we lost, I knew we were going to go deep into the playoffs. I could see they came together at that point in time as a team. And they all had a goal. Prior to early in the season, that goal was not really meaningful to them. But that 17th, 18th game of the season, it became a reality, and they recognized it was within their ability, they could compete with anybody, it was within their ability to win a state championship this year. And they pulled it off. Congratulations, gentlemen. Postseason record, 4-0. For those who don't know, it's a single elimination. We had it by in our first round because of the number two seed. Hampton was our first round, 2-0. Shortage Valley, 3-2. That was duck hand. Duck hand, gentlemen. Penn State, Donovan Sonner, this time. A lot of nerves, myself included. There was a lot of hard work at it there, right? But 5-0 win. That took us to Parkland, across the state, outside of state. We lost our fan, but I can't say our entire fan base, but we lost a tremendous amount of our support organization. But by that point in time, these guys had all the confidence they needed to pull out the win. 4-0 victory, 4-1 rather victory. At this point in time, I'd like to introduce you to the 2012-2013 BIHL class double A state champion, Vera Tchukh, ice hockey. Freshman. Actually, before I get to freshmen, I'm going to introduce the other coaches. John Weinberger, as I said, did not be here tonight. Peter DeBruy-Gordon, Norbert Smith, the parent, Bronfongz, Bronfongz Lewis. And my wife is not here. Technically, she's the manager, but I believe she got it most of the time. But she got it correct. She woke it correct. Freshman, Ryan Lee Glees. Defense. Come on up, Ryan. Dalton Hunter was unable to join us tonight. Most of the guys who are not here are on ice somewhere else tonight. So Brendan Don's not here. Sophomores, Denny State, the defense. Timothy Rubin, not here. Correct. Ben Douglas. Forward, Cameron Farr, the defense. This is Cameron. This is Ben Douglas.
You're just a little faster than me. This is Ben Douglas. Gotcha. Congratulations. Congratulations to you. Thank you.
Derek Schenner, forward. Juniors, forwards, offensive back. Forward, an alternate captain, Adam Burris. Forward, Chris Johnson, Chris wasn't able to be here tonight. Defense, Joey Wright, not able to be here tonight. Forward, Nathan Weinberger, not able to be here tonight. And defense, Drew Gongs. These three gentlemen are two-time state champions. Rob Asinko, our athlete, the defense. Rob is a freshman student athlete, that also, who really saw. And that's a great performance, too. Shane Brunnau, goalie. Rob is by like an alternate captain two times. This is the second he's already had. And Josh Slingly, captain. Fourth, second-year captain. With that, your 2012-2013 state champion, Vera Tchukh.
And we'll let them know that they will be dismissed in a second.
Maybe they want to.
The only thing I'm just going to tell them is, if you bowl the hockey at all, now that the Pittsburgh Penguins are just about out of players, it might look pretty. Gentlemen, congratulations. And you're welcome.
Or stay. Anything else after the moment?
Nope.
Thank you very much. Under education, we begin with Vera Tchukh.
Good evening, everyone. Looking at your student core agenda, I'll be reporting on Roman numeral number one and three. Earlier this month, on April 4th through the 6th, the NHS seniors took their annual trip this year to the windy city of Chicago. In a matter of three days, we managed to dance with the Blue Man Group, visit the Shed Aquarium with 23,000 other people, tour the Stock Exchange, take a boat tour, see the entire city in Hancock Observatory, visit the Museum of Science and Industry, and of course, shop. Needless to say, this trip was a milestone in our high school careers that we will never forget. Later, on April 10th, the NHS inducted their incoming seniors. We have no doubt that all 75 of them will fulfill their positions and of course, enjoy their trip, Justin.
Okay, moving on down to Roman numeral number five, which is the senior citizen luncheon. On Thursday, April 11th, the Senior High Student Council held their annual senior citizen luncheon from noon to 2:00 PM in the senior high cafeteria. Around 130 senior citizens from the community enjoyed a nice day out with our students. The entire Senior High Student Council was in attendance to help the seniors assist in parking, checking them in, serving them food, and also chit-chatting while they enjoyed their meals. There was also music from the piano being played by one of the members of the student council throughout the lunch. Even though there were some disgruntled seniors about the sticky buns not being for sale this year, the luncheon was definitely a success, and student council is hoping for continued participation from the community in the coming years. Now, if you jump down to Roman numeral number 10, the fourth annual Trooper Iwonic Memorial Takeoff Race will be held on Saturday, April 27th, at St. Vincent College. This race is in honor of state trooper Kenton Iwonic, who is the brother of high school teacher Mrs. Takesha Howe, who was killed unfortunately in 2008 by a drunk driving while coming home from work. Registration for the race is 7:00 to 8:30 AM, and the opening ceremony will begin at 8:00 or 9:00. The race begins at 9:00 AM, and if you stay long enough throughout the morning, there are activities for all ages, including a 5K and 10K run, one mile and 5K walk, children's rations, auctions, as well as other activities. Prizes will also be given to the top runners. And it's not too late to register, which is only $30. All proceeds go towards purchasing ventilizers for local police officers to enforce drunk driving in our area. If you'd like more information, you can get it at www.trooperiwonic.org. And there's information on Kenton's story, as well as more on the race and what their organization is doing. We hope to see you there. And that concludes our report for this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number one in your information packet is the Roman Report from Dr. Tepper, and it is the 45th Roman Report. We're getting close to it. Yes, we are. Yes, we are. And just a comment that we will be wrapping up kindergarten registration at the end of the month, so we will have pretty solid figures for next year's meeting. Okay. Thank you. And then, Dr. Kleber is not here, so I just wanted to announce that there will be a quick committee meeting next Tuesday at 5:30 prior to the meeting. And I'd like to introduce Junior High Principal Jeff Engle, which is letter D, and a presentation that the Junior High is doing with their autistic support program that is a new program at the Junior High this year. The teacher who was fired last summer and who is in charge of that program is Stacy Miller, she's also here. And Kim Marisa is also here, I'd like to see her coming up there as well, the Junior High assistant. So we're going to turn it over to that and another briefing.
Thank you, Mrs. Swager. Good evening, everyone. At this time last year, it was decided that the Junior High would be adding an autistic support classroom, students from Bagley's Autistic Classroom, as well as students from across different placements would be put into the Junior High classroom and create this autistic support classroom. And as you can imagine, with anything that's new or different comes some apprehension and fear of the unknown. I can remember talking with Dr. Soltes about the addition of this classroom to the Junior High. I knew that the key to the success of this classroom and the key to the success of the students would be picking the right teacher. And so after a great search, we found the right teacher, Mrs. Stacy Miller. Okay? So Stacy's going to talk to you a little bit about what's happening in her classroom and the great things that are happening with her students there. Before I do that, I've asked two of our peer mentors to come up with us this evening as well. Our peer mentors are here this evening. I thought it was important to recognize them, because these are young people who are doing some great things to help our autistic support students grow socially and emotionally and have them feel as if they fit in within the Junior High. So I asked Hunter Repko and Carly Cryne, come on up, please. I asked them to be here this evening because both of them, Carly and Hunter, both of them help out throughout the day, help out our autistic support classroom. Hunter works with the students in the gymnasium, and Carly works with them in art class, as well as the cafeteria. And so both of them have gone out of their way and have gone through a mentoring, kind of a program with Stacy Miller. And they've helped make those students feel accepted and have them have some socialization, which is very important for them to feel welcome to the Junior High. And so I told them they didn't have to prepare a speech tonight, but I'm going to give them the opportunity to talk if they would like. So Hunter, do you want to? You good? Carly's actually going to say something, so I'll let her speak briefly. You can speak briefly.
Okay. Well, to start this, my brother has autism. He grew out there over the years, but not every autistic child is as lucky as he was. And ever in the beginning of the year, when the first day of school, I heard is that there were autistic children in our music class, and I thought it would be nice to help out, and I thought it would be a good thing. They are, and realized over the past coming year, that they're all different and unique, and they all have a different perspective.
We want to recognize Carly and Hunter, the students who do. Also, we have one other peer mentor, her name's Grace Stinchulis, she wasn't able to be here with us tonight. Grace is doing the same kind of good things by helping out our autistic students. I'm going to turn the rest of the program over to Mrs. Miller, she's going to talk to you about what she feels, and she'll send the video for you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me come and share what my students have been doing this school year. The amaze, oh, wait, can the light switch on?
Is that too dark for you students?
Yeah, there's a light, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You don't have to see me, but I have students. Further than all, really. It's hard to believe that this point last year, the adults in our classroom, one of us was in Illinois, one was in North Carolina, and one of us was finishing up at IUP. Our students, we had two at Bagley, three at NHS, one at the Junior High, and one at a private school. So when you look at all of the different places that we were a year ago, looking in our classroom, it feels like and it seems like we've been together forever. We really have bonds in common, and I think that has been a huge part of our success with each other. Another huge part of our success is our school community. They have been very supportive and very welcoming. We have gym teachers who are more than welcome, are welcome to borrow equipment, to use equipment. We have all kinds of things, weight balls in our classroom that they're okay with us using, because they know it helps our students. They are more than willing to adapt and modify curriculum. They look to see what our students need and how they can help us so that they can participate. We have teachers who go out of their way to make sure that our students are safe and while taking care of while they're eating in the cafeteria with the student, other students. We've been given the freedom from administrators to offer a wide variety of services to our students. Like I said, we have some students who eat in the cafeteria with their grade. We have some students, but that's a little bit overwhelming for them, so we've been allowed to utilize a classroom, which also allows us to practice some of our life skills. We wash dishes, put dishes away, clean up after ourselves. And for our students, that's very important. When it comes to gym, we have, we work with Mrs. Williams, so you'll see on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we go in with her in our video. But we have one student who participates fully with the class, dresses and everything on his own. We have some who don't dress, but participate in the activities with a little bit of support from us. And then we have some who participate with a lot of modifications. A lot of it is directed by Mrs. Williams with input from me. So we've been very fortunate to have the staff to do as willing to work with us as we can. And then, just by chance, we've been blessed with some really great mentors who have some really great back histories and supportive families. Hunter just naturally works with our students, has created bonds, and the same with Carly. They treat our students like fellow students and not like visitors in the classroom. And for our students, that is very important, has led to a lot of success and makes everybody feel a little bit more welcome. To talk a little bit more about the successes, I don't want to brag too much, but I do have some. There's a lot of things that we don't see when it comes to standardized testing with our students, and that's going to be the growth. But we have seen tremendous progress in other areas. We have one student who came to us with a TSS, a therapeutic staff support. At the beginning of the year, he received 35 hours a week of support from this individual. We are down to five hours a week, and the mother said for the first time in his school career, she feels safe and comfortable sending him to school without this person. He knows, she knows that he will be okay. And that speaks tremendous volumes to the program that Dr. Soltes has helped us establish, that that's what a parent is comfortable doing then. Another success is our students are becoming more independent, and not just at school, but at home. They're entertaining themselves, they're engaging in activities with their siblings, they're making their own breakfast, and they're helping with chores at home. And one parent said, for the first time, her son came home and she was drying, washing dishes, and he said, "Just like school, Mom," and went over and started drying the dishes and putting them away. Those are things that sometimes we wonder, are we doing the right thing for these kids? And when we hear stories like that, we know we are. We're making a difference in their lives so that they can be more independent and successful, not just in our building, but outside as well. We have two different reading programs we use. We use Read 180 with our students. Some of our students have grown over 200 lifestyle points levels by February. And one of the students that has grown that much last year, regressed twice as much. So to see him not only stop regressing, but to make that progress is just remarkable to us. And honestly, it's not what we're doing any different, but the child feels comfortable and is receiving the appropriate amount of support. With the two classroom assistants and myself, we're able to give them that consistency and the one-on-one instruction that they need. Sister 44, one of our parents, which I'd like to kind of wave to Mr. Frank, his daughter has just bloomed and blossomed in our classroom, and a lot of it comes from the support that we get from home. We're very fortunate to have parents that are very involved in their students' academic careers. But they just made awesome growth in reading, and they're very, very pleased with that, too. We've also had some improved behavior. With one student who was at the Junior High, same setting, a little less support, last year was two days out of school suspension, six days of full days of in-school suspension, and two half-days of in-school suspension. This year, we had one day of in-school suspension. And that's tremendous. And it's not anything except that he's receiving the support and the services that he needs, and he feels confident in his ability. His mom said at home, he even talks about wanting to be better, wanting to get along well with the other students, and wanting to achieve academically. And from where they were last year to this point, it's just remarkable to be able to say that. We've also had some improved health and well-being with our students. At the beginning of this year, we worked with a student who had multiple health issues, multiple seizures. And by working together as a team, with the mom, with the care providers, we were able to get things under control, and that is no longer a concern. And for a parent not to have to worry about just health and safety is a real blessing, and we're very thankful for that. And once again, it comes not from me, it comes from working as a team, with the nurse, with Dr. Soltes, with the medical providers, and with the parents. And that has been a true, true blessing. Just to kind of give over some quotes that our parents have sent to us, one said, "Our goal for our daughter is for her to become as independent as possible without sacrificing her academic growth. This goal is being worked on, and we are very pleased at the results." Another parent said, "I've enjoyed seeing students outside of school engage with him. It seems now we see at least one person from the Junior High everywhere we go, and they always say hi to him and ask him how he is for something to engage him in a short conversation. It has also been a joy to watch him at the dance, and especially at the chorus concerts, being with everyone else, which is the way it should be." And for our parents, it is. It's just that it's being a student in the Junior High, but a student in the autistic support classroom. So I thank you for giving us that opportunity to provide that to our parents. Okay, now to the fun part. For my students to come and speak to you, that is a little stressful and overwhelming for them. So instead, we are bringing them to you via this video. It kind of highlights the three As, that's the arts, academics, and athletics from our perspective in our classroom. So we're ready.
In new learning, success, improvement in the arts. This year, two students from our class will aid in seventh and eighth wing chorus. They say it is cool extravaganza.
It's a great show.
We are a talented group that not only sings, but dances. We love to play We Just Dance.
Playing Just Dance on the Wii helps us learn dance moves to popular songs that we can show off at the school dances.
This year, we took music and art. We worked in groups to complete projects.
Getting groups helps us build art skills, practice social skills, and make new friends.
In academics.
In science, we learned about the life cycle of plants. We play our pumpkin and flower.
And watch it, you can go reach.
In reading, we get to read and discuss books out of the book. We use leveled readers that we can take help. We have all... We have all grown several levels.
Sometimes we work independently. We can wear headphones to block out noise if we want to.
We also learn by using the computer. One student has been the system forty-four. Another student has finished level one of Read 180.
I'm almost finished with my online period of class. I have those different teachers for math class, but my regular teachers help me so I can be successful. Ms. Miller is teaching me to track my assignments, meet deadlines, and communicate with my online teacher.
Miss Gray helps us with our speech, language, and social skills. She loves us at our school. She thinks the student body serves as good roles of bottles because they are friendly and is really good manners. The adults at our school are very welcoming and engage with us on a regular basis.
We also have a life course class this year. We've learned about participating in our own IUP meetings, writing, cursor following, recipes, and practicing kitchen safety. We also wash dishes and put them away.
Learning to back away was one of our parents' favorite skills, especially since some of us have now started making our own programs.
At Christmas party, we had a fiesta to celebrate all. We had, we decorated and set the table.
And we made our own dancing ourselves.
And an reflex.
On Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, we are the own class in the gym. This gives us the chance to work on our skills for when we need. Join Mrs. Williams' class on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
On Tuesdays and Thursday, we participate with the other class. They always encourage us to do our best.
This is one of the three-tiered festival hoops we purchased.
We love practicing our basketball skills.
Yeah, I heard they last.
At Christmas, Ms. Miller brought us We Fit Plus. We increase our physical fitness while addressing our nuclear sensory diet. Rigid vestibular, probably effective, air deep pressure sensation. These help the brain stem regularly improve the sensations appropriately. Following the well-balanced sensory diet helps us be ready to learn and decrease stress chemicals.
April is autism awareness month. The students, faculty, and staff are supported by purchasing t-shirts, wearing blue and wearing pink.
That's the end of our video, and that also reminds me that on May nineteenth, we have formed a team for the, the Walk Now for Autism Speaks, which will be held at Iowa. May nineteenth, registration is at one, and the walk starts at three. This is the first time that we'll have a team for Greater League Trip. Our goal is to have twenty-five team members and raise a thousand dollars as a team. We started off small, hopefully we'll increase that in the future. That also reminds me, one other thing I forgot. When you see in there, we had the three-tiered basketball hoops. We were able to purchase those with money donated to us by Jacob Feistall. He is a wrestler from Southmoreland. He had his parents last year pledge five dollars for every match he lost and ten dollars for every match that he won. And through that process, he had a very successful season, and he was able to donate five hundred dollars to our classroom in memory of Zach Palucci. And so it was very special, we felt very honored to receive that. And because of Zach's involvement with not only learning support students, but also with athletics, we used that money to purchase adaptive physical education equipment. We bought two of the basketball hoops with the three levels, which allow our students to participate with the regular education students as they're playing, because anybody can aim, but you're almost guaranteed to get a shot in, which just rules our students. We like to be successful. But we also purchased ten sets of cup stackers that we utilize in the PDE, too, for students who are not able to participate in the more interactive and physical activities. And we've seen much success with that. So we feel very blessed and honored that he was donating that to our classroom. And it's those types of things that have made us feel very welcome at Greater League Trip, and for that, we are very appreciative. So we thank you.
Now, this is something that everyone in our committee should be aware of, what public education is about. This is just one aspect of what public education provides our community. This is a very small number of kids, but it's invaluable for that family of those kids. And what really impresses me is we have these young people here who are mentoring and helping these kids. What a tremendous opportunity for our kids who are blessed with good health to be able to participate with these kids and help them. What a, what a thing that is to build on your life, to be able to have that is your being, is being a person that's willing to help other people. So that's a valuable experience that it's providing as well, and I thank you very much for this. Thank you.
I too am impressed. I just can't believe it. We are truly blessed with your children, the staff, our school, our facility. It amazes me every day. And we, we as a group also learned every day from these kind of presentations. It's amazing. It's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming to the presentation. We're very, very impressed and very proud of all of you. Thank you very much. On your agenda next week will be the presentation schedule for our year, April first. She's ten, three. I want to say she's coming from the years of her sorority. Getting on with the presentation. Now, she has been a student here and been built in my lesson, and she would like to continue here. Okay, thank you. So that would be in the agenda, not agenda for your approval. Item number eight is a consent to use this is what is the signature assignment. Contact for your present and vice versa, this is a press late in communication. Getting the five master group that's governing the state of federal. They, PDE sent us a, an email asking that we have to approve the ability for superintendent to sign electronically, and that it would be in order approval, and that's what we're asking you to do. Item G, we need to approve extended school year program services agreement between the school district and the Children's Institute, Pittsburgh, for the period starting July first to July thirty first at two hundred dollars a day. That would be an agenda item for your approval also. I remember H were really not accepting a life skills grant. This is. She went out.
She's, she's out.
Dr. Solis explained to me, it's a name that's very long, that we actually applied for this grant, and it's for our health curriculum, and it teaches these students to make good decisions in their life. So it's just information that we have applied for that grant, and not that we are accepting. And as Mrs. White already said, next Tuesday, before the regular coordinating, we will have our curriculum committee meeting at five thirty here in the CSC. Anything else to come up under? I'll turn number two, this is all the slides. Thank you. Next week on the agenda, we will have the treasurer's report, annual bills, as well as statutory transfers. Last finance committee minutes are in your packet. Item number two, and our next meeting is Wednesday, May first, at ten in the morning. And next week on the agenda, we will also have acceptance of gifts, a gift of five hundred dollars from the American Legion District Thirty-One for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Trip. And we also need another proposal to be approved for the hospital release form. Travel. That is the end of the finance meeting. Thank you, Mrs. Alder. Property is the fly, Mrs. Cozler.
Thank you. We have a project update from Axel Sartre.
Good evening, morning. You know it's spring, when Monday's baseball game is snowing, Friday's baseball game is eight degrees and sunny. So March has been difficult as usual with the weather. We are working through it. Overall, the project remains on schedule. There is some, I call fluff days, are built into your schedule that the weather permits. It kind of increases those days. We are scheduled start activities, we're on schedule. Kind of go through what we've done the last month or so. Custom contracting, your site contractor has reached elevation for the fieldhouse, eighty percent of your softball, baseball field area, so you kind of see that sort of movement on the northeast of your site. They've also come up to an elevation, which quite doesn't mean anything to anyone, but up one thousand eighty feet with the football field. Basically, it means you're within four to eight feet of reaching finish grade or spinach subgrade to the football field area. As far as the hillside, you see from motor field, we'll start construction on that once the football field reaches its point. Toad, if you've seen somebody put it over there, they did dig the bench area on the east side. So it's been a lot of earthwork, earthwork, earthwork. But also, your general burners suns with AR drilling, bronze suns, have completed your caissons, your press box foundation, which kind of been a bit in the back of the site of the upper level, the press box has been formed, your foundation. For the next couple of weeks, we'll see structural steel, and you'll see hollow floor precast plans coming in place. So April and May is really, really good. The fieldhouse, we started footings today. We had ten concrete trucks on site, roughly a hundred cubic yards of concrete was poured today. With weather like this, we can move fast. So hopefully, everyone pray, we will get a wet spring that maintains to be seventy-five degrees, sunny, and dry. West Penn utilities relocated their utility lines. System cable relocated a fiber line, all of that, the issues ahead of schedule. That's, that's really helped our project. I do ask for two approvals of change orders. I'll get to the construction cost summary. Your general contractors bill roughly five percent of the contract. They have a billing of a hundred and four thousand and change this month. Site contractor custom contracting, they're roughly about twenty-five percent complete. So they're getting to the point that they're really moving, they're one fourth of the way through the project. They did have two change orders, we spoke on executive session. One was for West Penn, additional site clearing for the utility line, and additional change order for assurance of earthwork, sorry, as far as the earthwork field. As we discussed in earlier board meetings, you have excess of tossel, which was unaccounted for. With earthwork, everything's unforeseen. You can only estimate how much of actual earth and what type of fill material you have on site. You did due diligence, you had test points done, access allocation to their due diligence, and had that, as Geotech report analyzed that, but there's also the unknown. So with the excess of tossel, you have a decrease in the amount of fill required to get the football field and just baseball field to proper elevations. So there is a change order for additional mining of your site for that fill material. The other side of that coin with the additional tossel, you are able to make some of that money back by selling that topsoil, because it's not needed for the project. The visitor straighter, Dan Watson did receive bids for the topsoil sale that, and the board's review of that price, and hopefully by next month we'll have a definite sale, and hopefully we're ready for the site because we need the area for more for movement. All primes have mobilized, HWC is on site, some of their coordination drawings are completed, some of these kind of pre-instruction items, but they're billing up nine percent of contract completion. Tomco, L G Tomco is roughly seventy-two percent of contract completion. They're doing all their undergrounds now, fieldhouse area and private press box. And then electrical contractor, like any city electric, has a roughly seven percent. Again, they're all underground, so it's a lot, like you say, a lot of earthwork, a lot of foundation stuff. But within the next two to three weeks, you'll see walls starting to go up. You'll see foundations wrapping up, and things really coming underground, so. I've requested the governor in general to have lots of visitor hard hats, because I know the school board will anticipate going to walk the site, see things coming together. It's progressing very well, so to speak, through the weather we've had and the winter we've had. So if there's any questions the board has, that concludes my report. I will also add, enough coming forward means all part together, maybe not as professional as what you just saw, the kind of slideshow, the imagery, and the doctor reports, kind of hard to see all the bits and pieces, but I'll put something together that you can kind of see how forward it comes.
Point six, more.
Okay, yeah, other than dirt, show dirt isn't going in. Exciting, but it's all coming up, maybe start from here.
Thank you. So that leads us to the new resolution of number two fifteen, approval of the change orders, PC E zero zero three, PC E zero zero six. It's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolution number two fifteen. Any discussion, questions, and a motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the motion, please say aye. Aye, I oppose. That passes unanimously.
And we'll also have an agenda item, the bidding award for the government school supplies, and our next property supply meeting is Thursday, May second, Thursday, Thursday.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Miller. Community relations, Dr. Swatch.
This is a nation-wide drug awareness summit tomorrow at six p.m. The L A S is running that summit.
Actually, the later police along western account.
The discussion of recent drug trends. Everyone got drugs in the community pervasive. Signs of abuse easy to find. Where to get help, problem with actions being taken, I don't know. So that's my answer to the drug problem. Come to the emergency room any day, we'll show you five or six people locking the door that have needle marks on it. It's unbelievable. When I was an intern, later at the hospital, we would call people down to the emergency room to see somebody with a record of this, because it's so unusual in America. Now it's. Big deal, so one, then none of them. Very terrible problem. It's in my truck, that's amazing, which is unbelievable to me. So if anybody is serious about drug use in our community, they probably got to go to the same nearby because it really is a very, very, very serious problem.
Cast around, I think you can tap on Dr. Swatch, but the flyer that was sent home with all of our students in elementary areas so that their parents will get this information. So if you know anyone in the community, please encourage them to attend tomorrow evening. It's the L A S. We would appreciate it.
There's also a, the Department of Parks and Recreation Commission meeting minutes. We have a paper in our packet that once I sort of sign up to help. And then it helps particularly growing the playground. April twenty-fourth, April twenty-fifth, and April twenty-sixth, and April twenty-seventh, and April twenty-eighth. So I guess we're looking for volunteers to go down and help build the new playground. Thanks to come out of the minutes of the meeting.
That is a response to the playground being burned last year in June. And we spent a year and had people look at it. The original people who designed it took it out and made some changes. And it's certainly where we want to switch and have the opportunity to appreciate your help.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Cozer. Westmoreland was one immediate unit. On next week will be on your agenda, the approval of the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen general operating budget. The summary of the I E working is under number five in your packet. And also on your agenda next week will be a resolution for the award of paper bid through the thirty I E consortium. And adoption of policies, procedures, and use of funds by the Greater Lake Tribe School District will also be on your agenda, resolution. E W C T C joint operating meeting, Mrs. Cozer.
Yes, item number six in your packet is a summary of our recent meeting. If you have any questions, we can have an answer to them. And one piece of information that's not part of that, that we received in our work session prior to our meeting, Ms. Bowers, the director of E W C T C, shared with us our P S S A scores, and this is for all of E W C T C. It's not pulled out just from Latre students. But we were ranked number seven in the state in math and number eight in reading out of all the P C Cs or C P Cs across the state. Pretty impressive. Our numbers are pretty good. How many do you show that?
That's a very clean trace.
And we also, we'll have the agenda item, approval of the operating budget.
I think we've also rated fourteen of our local school districts. From inside, businesses I know. They just had a five hundred ranking, a hundred and six school districts based on that.
Latre. Yeah, we're just saying, usually they're covering business times. It's not being important to you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tyra. Thank you. What policy P S D liaison, Mrs. Alder? Transportation, let me know.
Transportation meeting will be held on May twenty-second, three P M. But the senior high school.
Technology, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you. The meeting notes from today's meeting will be in my next packet. I'll, we're calling it audible for the next meeting date. So I have to work that out of mind this evening to switch it, switch meeting day. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's recommendations, Mrs. White. Next week, we'll ask the board to vote on the reservations, retirements that are listed under A. A total of twelve, teacher retirements. We have received a total of twelve. Some were voted on last month by the board, by the teachers who had sent them a little bit earlier. And the remainder of those that had turned them in by March thirty-first are listed on the agenda for your approval next week. As well as, we will be asking the board to approve some summer student workers. They go through the process of being interviewed by Mr. Millsley and help in our custodial and maintenance area in the summer, as well as approving a substitute secretary for the district, Catherine Russo, as well as a substitute teacher in Michelle Bush in Hart for a junior high school, as well as a school psychology intern for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year. They can always get these on early, as stipend of seven thousand dollars for named as Karen Abel. And to approve Christie Grulina as a speech intern for the spring of two thousand fourteen. Under other business, if you are not terminating your statement of financial interest, they are due by May first, please terminate as soon as you can. This Thursday, April eighteenth, is our April breakfast of champions. I believe there is one more in May. We have two more this year. Our regular board meeting is next Tuesday, April twenty-third. And in executive session, the board did speak of the May meetings, and they'd like to make a change to the May meetings. There will be one meeting in May. It will be Tuesday, May fourteenth. Both meetings will be held the same evening, and we will begin those meetings at seven P M. So the meeting in May will be May fourteenth. It will begin at seven and will be an executive session from six to seven. We will put out a decision that the Tuesday, May twenty-first meeting has been canceled. As well as, pass some time this weekend, Junior High School musical, St. Junior, is hosted by the S, and there are three who are available with Miss Laeger for Saturday or Sunday. So please make sure you, I'll mention that to her if you're interested in attending this weekend. Anything else you found this morning, board? Okay, we are adjourned. I will remind you, we are going into the executive session.